All right. I guess we're all here. We'll call the meeting, special meeting on the Buffalo County Commissioners to order at this time. And make a motion to accept their agenda.
Can I make an amendment? Wayne would like to visit just a little bit on some things he's found out.
All right.
For sheriff. And can we just put that at 10A?
Yeah.
Okay.
You second it?
I second it.
All aye?
Aye.
I need to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
I sent it to you guys yesterday.
I got it. I'll make a motion to approve.
All aye?
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay, we're ready to deal with this five-year plan. It's been in the works for some time. We've advertised it a couple of times. Today is a meeting though on it, not a period.
That's correct.
Okay. Go ahead, Lee.
Okay, well, we've put together the five-year plan. I think we talked about it last time. It was kind of in its infancy stages at that time. We put some things together. We've got everything laid out here on the table. We've got the resolution for real tax, the public input affidavit, the publication, all of our public input meetings, one required. We did three. The five-year plan guide. Everything is here. This is the certification page that if approved, we'll sign off on. And this is our five-year plan. Okay? So what I think we could do is get Brian McGinnis, District Three, on the phone. He helped put all this together. He put it in this fancy packet. And if we have any questions, then.
Okay, go for it.
Those are. Not of this yet.
They're on the, they're on the website, are they not?
Not these.
These are what we just got from Brian, right?
Yeah, this is yesterday. Yeah, this is Brian. This is.
This is.
Yep.
Good morning, Mr. Brian.
Brian Lee Senkey, Buffalo County.
Yes.
How you doing?
I'm doing well.
You are live and on the air with the Buffalo County Commission. And we have, I've got everything across the table here. All the maps, I guess we'll open it up if there's any questions. Again, this meeting is where we adopt the five-year plan and send it on to DOT today. If approved, by deadline Saturday the 15th. So, I can, I can pass that around, I can make copies.
Basically, Brian, all you did was pull together all the resources we have in the county, right? Like the bridges and the culverts and, and then we kind of prioritized.
Right, and yeah, I mean, the small structure inventory is a new twist to all of this. We didn't have that last year.
Okay.
Your county is unique in the fact that it's really focused. You don't have asphalt, you don't have chit seal, all that stuff. You're focused simply on structures, whether it be a bridge or a culvert. DOT is primarily worried about, you know, you know, bridge, those type of bigger projects. Because that's what the big grant is for, which just will qualify you for. So yeah, so we pulled everything together, all your previous things you've paid for or received, and put it in a single document to identify all the structures in the county, ones that need to be worked on, which is in your listed on the program projects. We have a map showing it, or maps similar, and the bridges. And then you have a list, project needs list, of everything that Lee and staff or whatever pulled together that they feel are the priorities.
Anything jump out at you that we should be concerned about, since you've done others?
Uh, no. I, we just, I know in previous conversations with you, we talked about the road and bridge funds. So I just want to make sure that, how much money was in that. Because if you look at some of these documents, you'll see, if you go over the one that's called Five-Year Program, it's a landscape document, you'll see there we're breaking out some of these bridges over the next couple of years and the different steps you'll apply for. Like for the first one, you're going to ask for a PE grant, you know, about a hundred thousand. Your, the county will need to contribute eighteen thousand fifty dollars. But if you're going to replacement, assuming a one-point-five-million-dollar replacement cost, the county is going to have to come up with two-hundred-seventy-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So that three-year road and bridge fund is going to come in to be able to match on those.
You guys did, didn't you?
It's a different thing, we've painted it in here, but it's very similar, so.
You want the staff?
That's on, what's that page called? That's the revenue sources list, Brian?
No, the one I just talked about is the five-year program project listing.
Okay.
It's a landscape document.
I think it's after the maps.
Yes.
Brian, can I have you repeat the, the, a cost of the bridge estimate to the county is two-hundred-and-some-thousand, is that correct?
Right, if we were to assume, because the county receives eighteen-point-oh-five-percent grant is your responsibility. The rest could be a big grant. So on a one-point-five-million-dollar bridge, the county is going to have to come up with two-hundred-seventy-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Okay.
Now, this is nothing exact, but this is a, you know, this is a planning document. We won't know until we're in those years what these bridges are going to cost, but.
But that was for a replacement cost, right? And then prior to that, you gave us an estimate for fixed, which was a hundred-and-some-thousand. I mean, that's a no-brainer, right?
Bridge last.
Right, and the documents are provided to me, or the, those are identified as replacement bridges.
Okay.
Bridges were.
Now also, we have a lot of, a high number of small culverts that need replacing, or at least attention, new ends put on and so forth, is that correct?
That's correct. That is correct.
Right, and most of those, Lloyd, were on the project needs list.
So what's the difference between the project needs list and the estimated replacement list?
Really, the project needs list is everything that needs to be done in the county. With you, it's very simple. It's either a culvert or a bridge. Other counties would have asphalt roads and they have all the maintenance going with that. So that's where that fills up. So for Buffalo County, we looked at all the culverts that need to be replacing, we just put it there. And you put a year when you think you'd like to do so.
I see that, okay.
Okay, and that's, so hopefully we will structure those and their associated costs to the budget. And you can ideally hopefully self-finance some of these.
Sure.
It, it's more of a plan for the future. Okay, here's what we need to do, how are we going to do it? What year are we going to do it? And we're, you know, start setting money aside to do those on an annual basis.
Sure. Well, it looks to me like we have at least four bridges too that need, or you have on the plan, but they're going to cost quite a bit of money as well. Hundred, or one-point-five million, a hundred thousand, one-point-five million, a hundred thousand.
Okay, and, all right, look, on that sheet, Lloyd, what you have is there's only, if you look at it, there's only two bridges on here. But when you start this, say, let's start the very top there, Bridge.
Yeah.
Oh nine, two forty, one dot five, twenty twenty-three. When you work with the DOT big program, there's two levels, or three basically, but two really detailed bridge done. One is you get what's called a BIG, D-I-G, PE grant. Normally you think preliminary engineering is the PE, and, but actually it is, but in this program it's not. All, what PE does is allow the county to hire an engineer to do an H&amp;H study or hydrics and hydrology study to know what size of structure you should put there, if you're going to oversize a span or anything like that. So that's the first round. Once you get that study done, then, for a hundred thousand, which costs eighteen for you, then you move into either rehabilitation or reconstruction. We're going to reconstruction. And that's what that next grant in twenty twenty-six is, is we're going to be looking at replacing Bridge one thirty-five. And the following year we'll do twenty twenty-four. And you do the same thing till we get that bridge to start construction. And some of that is shown in the revenues page as well. We're kind of staggered, if you want to look at money itself. Revenue sources, it's called.
Okay.
You will see, go down the page here and see the first hundred thousand, and that's big preliminary engineering for what we're going to apply for in twenty twenty-three for one bridge, apply for twenty twenty-four for the other bridge. And then you can see how they're just staggered as they go down.
Sure.
We'll build one in twenty twenty-five and one in twenty twenty-six. So that's, again, this is a plan. We update it every year. Some things get done, some things do not get done or get moved. So this is just a layout of how we see the county progressing in its highway department and repairs into the future.
Sure. Makes sense to me. Okay. Yeah, do we have any other questions here?
Sherry, how about you? You okay with it?
Now, just one more time on this small structure. That will be mainly up to the county to put funds away for that, is that correct?
Yes, we have to look at it, look at it in more detail as far as the span, the distance they're across. But generally, the big program is specifically something, the bridge, I think it's a, needs to be a twenty-foot span or more. Lloyd, I don't have the specifics.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I'm just trying to get a general overview of what we need, how we need to think here.
Right, and I just received information on the culverts as far as the cost, I think it was yesterday. Otherwise, I'll still try to get it done, but you'll see in that project needs list, that long one we looked at, showing all the years, that actually has for, you know, costing thousands of dollars for these culverts. I haven't a chance to calculate that yet.
Sure, sure. No, that's fine. I'm just kind of want to understand where we're headed here and how. Makes a difference how you plan and think, if you know that this is all our cost. You know, there's ways to do things cheaper and there's ways of it costing more. And this is giving us a pretty good idea of what we are looking at, what we need to appropriate funds for.
Right, and I think what you're referring to, what I commonly say is, there's the farmer way and the engineer way.
There you go, there you go. Your mind kind of leans to the farmer way a lot of the time.
You know, I was saying that.
Exactly.
So, Brian, to reiterate, a lot of the smaller culverts weren't on our lists and we're working on updating that now to get them all included, so. Locations and pictures and GPS locations and all that, so.
Are you working with our office on that?
Uh, I haven't done a whole lot with your office on that yet. We've kind of been doing it in-house, just finding them and getting them on the map, you know, kind of handwrite them on there, so.
And we've done that work for other counties where, you know, we were doing mainly, the first we started during flood damage and got pictures and, you know, every site and so forth, and GPSed and where it's at. So if you're looking at doing something like that, I'd call Harry in our office just to make sure if you're doing it, that's great. We'll just do it in a format that he can integrate into his mapping.
Yep.
GIS software to make sure it all comes together.
Thank you, Brian. I, I don't know, I don't, do we have any other questions here?
Lee, do you have something for him to sign? I do. Uh, I believe at this time then, we removed the plan. We need a motion to submit the five-year plan to Department of Transportation.
Do I have a motion here?
I'll make a motion to submit the five-year plan to Department of Transportation.
All aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's, motion carried.
Thank you, Brian.
Can we change that to adopt?
Adopt?
Plan.
Okay. I make a motion to adopt the five-year.
We amending your.
I'm amending my first motion to adopt.
Thank you.
The five-year plan.
Thank you, Brian, and I'll second. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
You're doing the same thing.
No, I'll see you next week.
Thank you for your efforts, Brian.
All right.
Later, good luck, Brian.
Okay. We'll move on to the one-day liquor license for the Legion, for the upcoming ball.
And Kenny came over and we got everything figured out. I just need your signature.
Okay. Well, Ken approved the last one, or last. Well. I need a motion now. Who's?
Or what?
This liquor license.
But just the one.
One-day liquor license for the American Legion. They have their fall ball.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for the American Legion.
All aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
See you Saturday.
Okay, we're moving on. American Legion, Kenny, do you have a proposal for us?
Yeah, at this time, we're doing a study of asbestos in that hall. And until January, when we get the results, we're going to just leave it that way.
All right.
Did you get ahold of Catherine then?
No, we don't, that's just on our own.
With this being said, I'm, I would like to propose, or I guess I would like to make a motion that they have been paying the electricity since July, that we reimburse them for the electricity from July through December while they do this study of basically seventy dollars a month. And we had been paying it up till July.
And I thought we had talked about the fire department kicking in.
The fire department pays four hundred dollars a year to the Legion for their share.
And we figured also that it was.
Well, if, if this proposal will stand January, we'll be twenty-four-hundred a year. But then that would take, then we would build a fire department and the fire department would reimburse us. But right now.
Which we haven't done anything but pay the electricity since before we've been.
I believe it's been paid, from what I understand, directly through Central Electric. They bill this, am I not right, Kenny?
They've billed the Legion.
Okay.
And we pay a yearly sum, a monthly sum. Fire department has always reimbursed this. The sheriff's office, which is the county, and the county highway department have been three, so it's split three ways. Okay, now, we don't own the tower. Legion has nothing to do with that tower. That is the county tower.
Right, no, we understand, Kenny.
So you guys are letting the fire department and the sheriff use it. Legion has no right to be collecting the electricity from them.
Yeah.
We have nothing, we're leasing that tower to the county.
Yeah.
Anybody on that tower's got to be collecting from you. And it's all county. That, the sheriff is in your boat.
Right, but.
Fire department.
I just, like I said, I just know from July that the Legion has been paying the electricity.
Yep.
And I guess I propose that we reimburse the Legion from July till December till all this asbestos stuff gets taken care of.
Okay, do I have a second?
Well, for safety discussion, I'll second it. But you just got them telling me that Legion's been paying this by themselves. Did we not talk about the law that the fire department would have access to it as to the sheriff's department has that? So has anybody paid other than us?
Yes, the fire department has.
Paid us?
No, they've been paying directly to the Legion.
And you don't want that anymore, right?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Because you've never, well, he's just got them saying you wanted it to come to the county.
Well, it's not.
It's not the fire department or the sheriff's department.
The tower.
Rent on a tower, we don't know.
And when we're talking about the tower, we're talking about electricity.
Right.
Right, it's two different subjects.
That's electricity that's being run off.
That's also being used by those radio.
Okay, if you own the tower, why would I charge rent for somebody using it?
We're doing electricity.
We are.
That's not rent, then.
Yeah.
Okay, charge the electricity then, Kenny. Just go to the tree.
Is the electricity only used by the tower?
Right.
Or is it building also?
No.
It's built there altogether, though.
Yeah.
It's all together.
It's, there's no use, it's a minimum.
One service.
Yeah.
One service.
Right.
So it, it is for the building and for the tower.
Right.
Okay.
But it's a minimum service because they don't use.
I understand that, I'm just.
And a lot of it's the facility charges keep power there, so that when they put the light on, it's there, so. So what are we, what are we paying then?
It would be seventy dollars times five, which is, what, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars?
Okay.
All aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, Lowell, we've, we got a discussion on the mower and two tractors, is that correct?
That's correct.
You want to go ahead and, we have the older Adco tractor, is that?
Yep, the Challenger.
Challenger, okay.
Challenger tractor and the John Deere, that twenty-nine fifty-five that I consider basically halfway dead property because each tractor has an implement on it and they're not, they're just for that implement and they're not versatile enough to, to to connect on to the mower or the mulcher or the groomer. And what I'd like to see happen is trade both of those in and get a tractor, a little better used tractor that's got good air conditioning in it and a little bit friendler, friendly, use, user-friendly so that we could eliminate at least one rental tractor for the summer that we've been leasing from CMB Operations in Miller.
And that was five thousand each, two-hundred hours?
Uh, we have had two rental, or two leased tractors this summer. We were allowed to, to go up to two-hundred-and-fifty hours per tractor. And this last tractor we have gone over, I okayed it with him and he said he was okay and put another twenty or thirty hours on it. But figuring so far this year, we've, we've spent, or we've used the tractors five-hundred-and-eighty hours and their cost is twenty-five dollars an hour, which basically is fourteen-thousand-five-hundred dollars we're paying in lease payments for tractor usage for the summer. And if we could eliminate that and put that towards the purchase of a better tractor, that way we could use it on all our implements and not be tied to just the mower or the retriever.
Or the mulcher.
Or the, well, the mulcher is, yeah, on the, the mulcher and the mower and the, and the groomer, yeah. We could have one tractor instead of three or, three or four.
Can I make a comment about this?
Yes.
I don't think the ditches got to be mowed five times. I don't think they ever used the rented tractor for that amount of hours before Lowell come to work. So I think you could salvage them two tractors he's talking about. You won't get nothing for them. Like you said, they don't use them. I think he had them repaired for God knows why. But to stay, like Sherry said, last week, mows twice a year, basically.
Racks when you mow that, that's, that's.
Could I just mention?
Go ahead, Larry.
The roads weren't mowed five times. I personally run the tractor.
He said he moved them four times last year.
There are, they weren't all mowed four times because of the fire ban. I don't want to start any fires out there because we just had one in over Droell County that I seen. And one was just previously in Buffalo County. You can't be mowing when the, the grass is dry, but the reason why you would mow close in, in that many times is to keep ahead of the weeds. Everybody wants these roads done now. Lowell prepared Sherry's road for the grooming part. That is saying, then he didn't grade anything else and just left. He was preparing her road with that short grass going through the groomer, or the, the the mulcher a whole lot better than last year when the roads were not mowed. There's grass this tall in the wind road that the mulcher, I was straddling the, the wind roads left and right and plugging up a whole lot of times because it helped rip the chain that dragged in front of there so the rocks don't get thrown. And with the chain plugging up, it snagged that long grass. The best, the best way to do that is keep the roads mowed down close. So when them guys go to pull the shoulders in, you don't have them great big wind roads, because this was down on my road last year. I drove the car down there and it was as high as a car, car door, tire or, or the car door was, and you couldn't get over nothing. You've got to mow them. And another thing, reason why I kept the, the roads mowed the way they were is because them thistles that everybody's leaving go to a head and when you get the purple head on there, the seeds are already established. And then when you go in there with the spray, sure, it curls them down, but there's enough water in them plants to mature them seeds. And when the wind comes up and they break apart, that seed still drifts over the, all and them seeds, the weeds aren't coming from the ditch that the county is taking, preparing. I can look out over on all the landowners who grew ground and there's oodles of, of plants out there and they're harping about, we're not mowing them or spraying them. And where them weeds are coming from is from the, the land. And, and, and I've been mowing them road ditches not even quite a full year, but I had a friend coming over and they couldn't believe the, the, the good-looking roads that are over here now compared to their county. And most of this road that was mowed this year was only three times and some of it was four or five times were not even in, in the, the main. Look, wait a minute, wait a minute. Just let me read this, a letter from Sherry last month. Roads mowed four times this summer and many will need to be mowed again.
Okay.
As the roads are, weeds are a foot tall.
Yes.
Okay, why are we complaining about too much mowing then?
Because the, the mowing wasn't timely, is the reason. Twice the mows were because of weed control. Spraying perhaps earlier would have stopped some of those thistles that the third mowing was to contain, okay, but.
Now wait a minute. Lowell had COVID the week, probably the only week that could, was applicable to spray. And this idea of going out there and spraying any time you feel like isn't cutting. I can tell you that right now.
I also, I want to address this Sherry's road deal. Right after the September meeting, they came out and bladed my road, which needed it, yes. But, and I, I, I will start out by saying, it looks wonderful. I appreciate that. However, so far, there have been four trips out there. so far, there have been four trips out there with a main painter to do what they've done and it still isn't finished. This is my point. Our road hours, our man hours and our machine hours could certainly be put to better use rather than driving, I don't know, it's ten or twelve miles out there, deadheading that mul, that grader out there and back and not doing anything else on the way back or there. And it's still not finished for three miles of road. I'm, I appreciate it, I really do. But, for three miles of road.
I'll tell you what, uh, first of all, we get those complaints, this hasn't been done. Lowell's trying to go around and satisfy these complaints. And then guess what? Well, there's inefficiency every time there's a complaint, but.
Well, do you not agree that maybe this three miles of road could have been done in two trips?
A lot of things could be done. We're learning and process as well.
I send my help where it's the most efficient and time, time-wise efficiency on it. If we got a few hours that we can go out there and, and better the situation, that's what we do.
Well, I, I do not agree with that, Lowell. I, I, I.
Well, we're here running the thing, end of story.
Well, we're working on a lot of expense in the future for our highway department. We need to start to pay attention to where we're standing.
We're working on it. Leonard. Just one more comment on that three miles on her road. I went over there to groom ahead of the maintainer and there wasn't better than more. There wasn't a, a blind time on that because on his way past that, we went over on the two, what is it, two thirty road?
Two thirty.
Groomed.
Right.
Not groomed, but mulched and maintained that also. That was pulled in, you got, and, and you can't mulch them roads right after you pull them in because the road, the dirt in the gravel at that time is wet. You gotta let them weeds peer down and dry down in them wind roads. The same way with the wind road, the dirt, the gravel, when them. When I went over and I tested to, for the mulching, I went a mile and a half on the, the unbladed pulled in. It worked fine there and then when finally the, the maintainer got there to do his job behind, I went over half the, the mile lines that was bladed in the middle and that worked perfect, so there was no wasted time. I got grooming or, uh, mulching before he got there, cause I got done with my mulching over on Cheryl's road. And the, the, why sat there and wait? So I went and I tested it out and that's what Lloyd was just saying. We're working in, in, and we're trying different, what method? Because for years them roads weren't even maintained at all. And you would, that was done in that first meeting that I come to. The roads weren't mowed. I stress, stressed that there shouldn't be any trees. I'm cutting some of them trees down in the roads, cause there should not be a, a tree in the roads because of the winter when the, the, they're catching. Another guy called in, I'm extruding them, them tall grass that's above the road yet. I swing down there even deeper to get it so it's no wind catch. The same way with the roads. Lowell's got the, the maintainer guys and himself are putting the wind road to the south of the road cause when you get snow in the winter time, we're, we're, we're maintaining them and we're getting them ready for the winter. Cause when you have a wind road on the north side of your road, you're gonna, we all know this, the northwest wind is gonna drift in a lot more snow than the south. So they're pushing the wind roads to the south or to the left of the roads. That we're doing our job the best we can to keep up with everybody. Uh, that's all I got to say. Thank you, Leonard. That's all I got to say. Only one more thing, if some of you are so good and know exactly how to do this, you need to, we'll go back to the program where he had, where we take the volunteers. Give you so much an hour.
Well, this, this is when, from old mower and tractor, you're a whole different ballgame. I thought we were discussing the old mower and the tractor.
You're correct, I didn't agree with her.
You know, um,
Well, let's move on.
Let's just table it till the next meeting.
Table which?
Well, the old mower and tractor. I mean. Yeah, come back with some numbers.
Alright.
You know, let's have somebody look at these tractors, what is it gonna cost? We can't make a decision on just this.
Okay, Lowell had one more thing. Now, we are looking at a lot of culverts next year.
Yes.
And, uh.
Gravel, gravel hauling's gonna be done next year.
Yeah. And here, let's go over those figures of what it costs Lowell, uh, gravel, the, what we spent graveling roads. You have the figures here, let's go over that. You wanna read them off?
Okay.
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 This is a copy. You guys can look it up.
The county side of gravel, gravel hauling is, uh, we put eighteen thousand, five hundred miles on our own truck graveling roads for county since this spring. I figured, uh, three and a half miles a gallon for fuel, uh, miles per gallon and that converts to fifty-three hundred gallons of fuel. The average price per gallon was four dollars and twenty-five cents, which is twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars for just fuel. Uh, Leonard, not Leonard, but Joe has been the main gravel hauling guy. Uh, he runs the belly dump and I figured at least five and a half months that he's been in that truck graveling basically every day. And that figures out about nine hundred hours of labor to gravel roads. And we're paying him twenty-five dollars an hour, which equals twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for labor. Uh, previously I had truck expense at a lower rate, but I upped that to twelve thousand dollars for repairs, uh, insurance and
Depreciation.
depreciation. Which brings it up to fifty-seven thousand, twenty-five dollars that the county spent, uh, hauling gravel and delivering gravel anywhere in the county. Uh, it was kind of amazing when I went to look at the scale yesterday and the ticket numbers were right there. And I got the ticket numbers from last, we shut down December first of last year. And on November thirty, if Roger Vaughn and I hold the last load and the ticket number was two twenty-five. And I looked at it last night and the ticket numbers were thirteen fifty. So we have, we have delivered eleven hundred and twenty-five semi-loads, very few straight truck loads, I'd say under twenty, but eleven hundred and twenty-five loads of gravel this summer. And, uh, we had contract help and, uh, Roger Vaughn, I, he, he gave me the figures yesterday and he said he delivers ten thousand, seven hundred and ten ton of gravel. That leaves the county hold twenty-three thousand, forty ton of gravel. And if you take fifty-seven thousand dollars that we spent on the county side of it, we got the, the gravel delivered to the site for two dollars and forty-eight cents a ton. Contract, you can see on the paper there, that a ten thousand, seven hundred and ten ton at sixty-four thousand, five hundred and six dollars, that cost us six dollars and three cents a ton delivered. Uh, total overall, every ton that was delivered between the county and the contract help, uh, was a hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-one ninety-six and we hold thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty ton of gravel, which costs at three dollars and sixty cents a ton just for delivery costs in the county.
Thank you, Lowell, thank you. Now, Lowell, uh, we're looking at, I don't remember the number, but a lot of culverts need attention this next year. We have eighteen inch culverts that are plugged.
Or crushed.
Or crushed on the ends, uh.
Or ripped up from snow piles.
And, uh, it look, it's our observation at least that a lot of these culverts probably only need the dug up on the ends and extensions or new ends put on them. And that would correct the plug part, portion of it. We don't need, the middle is not plugged generally.
They're very salvageable, they just need some attention and, and get out the sediment that's been settling in the ditch so the water flow can flow freely.
Okay. Uh, now, it's our intentions that we'll need very little gravel hauling, we still have the help here. It makes sense to me at least that we give some means of, uh, working with these culverts cause that's where the help needs to be focused on next year. Uh, there shouldn't be very little gravel hauling at all.
True.
So, how do we do that? Now, you had a figures, uh, when we hire the, the backhoe work done is how much an hour?
Well, it, we put in, uh, we had Rod Ryder out there three times this summer putting in culverts. And it's, uh, six hundred and fifty dollars per culvert. So if you have two culverts, you get thirteen hundred dollars to install the culverts plus five hundred dollars mobilization fee to drive back and equipment back and forth to the county. We had him fix some low spots, some soft spots up in the road and, uh, at that time, we installed two culverts and fixed them soft spots and that was thirty-six hundred dollars for installation and road fixing and every time he comes out and installs two culverts, the last time we installed two twenty-four inch culverts down here on three thirty, three sixty-first street by Dave Golkey's in that slough, that was eighteen hundred dollars. It's, it's, it's a lot of money for what we're getting, I think. It only took you about three and a half hours. But it's always five hundred dollars to mobilization fee and then three, six hundred and fifty dollars per culvert. So, we spent right at seventy-five hundred dollars this summer in installation of six culverts and some soft spots, two soft spots in the road up on two twenty-sixth street, the twenty, two twenty-fifth street.
Lloyd, I have a question. Okay, uh, Lowell, now you had, uh, a proposal. It's gonna cost, if we ran a medium-sized backhoe is, can you help me out here?
Thirty-five hundred a month.
And, and we could do it for like three months?
Right, right.
Okay, and then a larger backhoe would be?
Thirty-nine hundred a month.
And the purchase, uh, a decent backhoe was how much?
About thirty-eight, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred to forty-five thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think these are figures we need to be pondering. We've got a lot of culverts that need attention. We need to decide what means that we're going to go with, uh, do this. And, uh.
Between no gravel hauling next summer and we got the help and we've got the time, uh, I think we can save half the cost of installation.
Or, yeah, at least.
And you can't have a hired person there fixing these culverts, cause it's, there's a lot of dead time as far as machine time. So you gotta utilize your kelp that you have and the time that you have so that it can be done more efficiently.
Okay, thank you, Lowell. We'll be discerning that very heavily. However, I only have two months left, Lowell. But I think any of the new people need to understand what we're about here.
Did you talk to anybody besides Rod Ryder?
No, I have not.
That might be an idea.
Well, we're working on that. We're considering every option that we can think of at this point.
Right.
But it's, it's gonna be a considerable figure and we just will utilize the help we have. Alright, let's move on here.
Chamberlain.
Chamberlain. Chamberlain.
Yeah.
Is he bringing it? My question was, and I'm not trying to interrupt, that's important. Uh, he's charging five hundred dollars per mile, is he just bringing a truck and a backhoe?
And a skid steer. He's got two men, a skid steer and his excavator.
Yeah.
And, well, his excavator's on a lowboy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, that's plenty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, one more question. So you get a backhoe, you gotta hitch on the western star to move that around or you just gonna drive back?
Just drive, drive it around.
Well, we're, at this point, we're considering the most efficient way of getting these projects done there yet. We haven't made any decisions of any kind.
That's right. Okay.
If there's other options out there, we'll consider. We're putting it out, what needs to be done, it's gonna be expensive. And we have this bridge, five-year bridge plan that's gonna cost the taxpayers a lot of money, no matter which way we go at it. Alright, let's move on to the greater damage.
Okay, like, it's right here, uh, we do have all the information. I guess what I'm gonna ask from the commissioners is that we work at these type of things as a group cause Janice and I didn't have a whole lot of information about what happened, when it happened, if it happened, how it happened or anything else. But we're the ones that get a lot of phone calls that ask about it. So if we could just have some input on what's going on or even when it happened, we should have probably known when it happened. I think our, our policy and procedures will now cover that. So if there's an incident, it should be covered right away. But at least, at least we should know what's going on. If we're gonna be paying those bills, I think that we should have some knowledge of what is going on. Cause we're pretty blind when you guys don't tell some of us things, so.
Or somebody's going to be gone, we need to let the other ones know too, not the other auditor.
So, I put together, there's a, a incident report form that I gathered. Uh, the handbook does talk about that. Any accident or injury near miss, anything like that. Um, and meetings going forward, we can talk about that and reiterate the importance, urgency of reporting not just injuries or accidents, but nemesis too, so that will help immensely.
Okay.
Okay.
But this thing is complete, the loss has been paid. I can tell you right here that, uh, the loss was forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and there's five hundred dollar deductible and it's all been paid.
Yes.
Cheryl?
My question is that when this was first brought up at a meeting that I'm aware of, was when Susan asked Lowell about it. And at that time, our deputy district, or state's attorney told him not to respond.
Right.
Because it was still under negotiation.
It's litigation, it comes under litigation.
But, that was after it had been paid.
We didn't know that, we didn't have this form then.
You can't say that you didn't know that, Lloyd, because the voucher went through you guys in the June meeting. Did you not look at it?
Until they sign off on it, it's considered under litigation.
When it's paid, it's done.
Call Steve if you want, I don't care, we just got this.
Okay, I understand that you just got it, but the check, the voucher for that went through you guys at the June meeting. When that was paid, did you lift up the front to see? I mean, I saw it in the paper when it said forty-two thousand, hardy oak, but I thought it was the payment for the blade because that's around forty thousand. I didn't have any information, but when you guys look at the vote, the voucher, if you flip that up, it's self-explanatory behind there what that was for. Did you not, any of you see that?
But, until they sign off on it, it's considered litigation, so we're not, uh.
We're not allowed to discuss it.
Yeah.
Till we get the paperwork back signed and stamped.
That's what happened.
When it was paid, it wasn't signed and stamped?
No, they did not sign off on it until.
We did though, that's. It's, it, you signed off.
Yeah.
You signed off right there.
Alright.
Right.
And what's the date?
Six fourteen twenty-two.
That's June.
That's June.
And she asked about it after that.
Some of it's, some of it's been in, in my, I think I told you that too, some of it has been in my, my possession, but again, all of us.
We need to file, but all together, we can have pieces here in it.
And then I, I have another question was then that incident report, has there been one made up on that? Yeah, to this date.
Well, at that point, we didn't have a policy and procedure handbook.
No, I know you didn't.
So.
But that still should be put in the personnel file for Lowell. At this date, being this now is this.
Is this public? That's gonna be. I don't know. So that would be the question, is that public information right there?
You have to ask Steve.
Yeah, you gotta ask Steve and he tells me it's not.
So what happened?
Are you still on Steve?
Yes, I am.
Oh my, forgot all about this.
Hey Lloyd, you're here.
Sorry about that. Well, Steve, can you help us out on this incident report?
Well, two things you wanna, number one. Uh, I'll give you an example. Uh, car accident happens, uh, insurance company pays five dollars a buck right away almost always, always, one or the other. Doesn't mean they're admitting liability, doesn't mean they resolved the case, that doesn't mean anything. Even the payments paid later are, are not a release like, like you get, uh, uh, a final release to the problem where they say, okay, we're done, we're okay, everything's all right, we're not gonna sue you or them or anybody. Number two, whatever we put in the personnel files or private to the personnel, uh, I, I think we were talking about that in the last few minutes. Uh, those are not, those are not public files, just like there's things in there, maybe somebody was pregnant or maybe they're, they're gone because they have cancer, all those things are private, they're sealed files. You don't get to tell us what we're in the personnel files. All right? Does that answer the two questions?
That helps a lot.
And can this be public?
Okay, this R D O, the state, or this, uh.
Statement of fixing the road grader.
Yeah, this, uh, fixing from R D O, is that public information?
Uh, I, I don't know that it is, I, I mean, I, in a sense of that, you know, we're, just last week we were calling this new insurance contractor we had.
I'll do it for you. You want a new one?
Yeah, yeah, those are the one we've been talking to who appears to be learning the job, but they've been on about three months or four months or something, which happens very well when this is all going on. So, I'm not looking at what you're looking at, so I can't tell you.
Sure. Sure, it, it's an accident inspection condition, something to this effect, I, I don't.
So if I'm driving Steve's vehicle and I have an accident, I don't wanna tell him what happened until somebody signs off, is that what Steve's saying?
No, that's making it public information.
The county owns the road, they, the people that pay taxes own the road.
Right.
So they should know what the hell happened.
Do you have a comment, Steve?
Well, I think it's, I, I.
Uh, 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 uh.
This is a, uh, diary about what happened is, is between insurance company and everybody that had.
Oh shit!
I've never heard of such stupid.
Well, at this point, I think all we can do is learn from this incident.
We don't know what the incident was.
Can we tell what the incident was Steve or what, how? Okay, just give us a brief explanation of what, uh, what happened there.
I was installing a culvert over, uh, Hunter Kniplings driveway. This was December ninth of twenty-one. And the road grader, I just got done cutting a groove in the ditch for the culvert to be laid in. The road grader was headed west, but it was still in the construction zone, I should say. And I put, I installed, or I put the culvert in the groove where the, it was installed and I was backfilling with dirt, with payload. And I had to bucket up about six foot. And I forgot about, it just plum, plum, simple as can be, the bucket was up about six foot and all I seen was the bucket. And I ran into the back of the payload, or back of the grader. And it didn't look that severe and I thought we could get it, honestly, I thought we'd get it fixed for about three thousand dollars. But as we got closer and looked and the inspection of it, there's a big frame that holds all your oil coolers and all your pumps in the back of the road grader.
Expenses, I mean shit cost a lot more. Why was the big cover up, I mean? That's for the accident.
It was an ac, it was an accident.
Yeah, why, oh, we can't say, we can't say.
Well.
Well, we couldn't, you heard what he said. We just got the papers, it was on the agenda.
There's things that happen every day that, that.
Yeah, there's car wrecks right in the road, are you supposed to throw a blanket over it so nobody can see what happened?
How, how micromanage or how minimal do you, does, I realize it's a big bill.
Yeah, and I'm saying, I don't care, it's an accident, you should be able to say, yeah, I run into a, I hit the brakes with the motor, I mean, why keep it covered up?
Well, if you do know or you don't know what you're gonna do with the information.
But Lowell, what you just said is, I mean, is totally understandable.
Right.
It was an accident, you didn't look on purpose.
Yes, it was an accident and insurance covered it.
And that's not, that's not the problem, the accident's not the problem. The problem is that it's now October, that happened in December and it's finally set.
Mm-hmm. But we couldn't do that.
Steve, did you have any comments here?
You guys, you guys watch TV?
No.
You watch, you watch President, ex-President Trump talk on TV and all they say is he's saying crap that's gonna be used against him in court, that's why you don't talk about accidents.
Why would there be a court deal, I've had stuff, Lowell, I've never been in court, cause my bill.
Just a mere lesson.
Why is that while I talk?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Steve.
That's why lawyers are taught not to talk and not to, not to start throwing stuff out there and tell us it's finally settled. Whether you think Trump's smart or dumb or talking all the time, he shouldn't be doing it. And we shouldn't be doing it until we have the releases and that the insurance company is slow is not a surprise to me. Say, I mean, it's, it's special, if we're meant slow in any case and with the new, there's, and it's.
But it was signed off on in June.
That's okay, you guys act like, if we, if we talked about it earlier, it'd been, it'd been great, it wouldn't have made any difference except if it came back to hot dogs, we do not want it to come back to hot dogs.
Steve.
Somebody says something that they wanna use against us.
Steve Lloyd has a paper in front of him that says he signed off on it in June.
But the insurance company didn't release.
Yes, it is.
Just get the check, why I just told you about the five thousand dollar check. We get up, they ask for them back later, they're not, they're, they're literally not, they're releasing. Payment is not a release, it's different, okay? Do you understand that?
What was that paper Lloyd signed?
I agree with, I agree with all of this.
I don't know Laura Ingalls ever.
What he did.
You understand, I think you did a good job Steve and I'm.
Progress, but you just said it right here.
Okay, let's move on please.
We're gonna move on.
Yeah, go move on, he, he did it, he should have, he should have told, he couldn't know, I, I.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the grants, please.
Okay, grants, Lee.
All righty, well, we've got a list of grants that, uh, we've been working on, some we've talked about, um, there's a new one that we haven't. Uh, we've kinda created a list to help keep track of everything, also have the weed grant on here, we won't spend much time on that. Um, the ARPA funds or the, as we call them, the COVID funds, you might recall, uh, we've got the application turned down in November, uh, that first half payment of one ninety-one, hundred ninety-one thousand, I wanna say January, February, that was deposited. The email that I keep referring to from the US Treasury is now here, uh, the second half is open uh, for counties to go in and, uh, apply or in other words, get the second half, uh, coming, I'll be working on that in the coming days. Uh, the sooner the better, uh, we'll get that taken care of. The new one is something called, uh, Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, I don't know a whole lot about it. Um, counties are eligible for funding, uh, Buffalo County happens to be eligible for fifty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Um, I've reached out to some other counties and, uh, the application process sounds relatively straightforward, so.
Can we use the question?
That was a little unclear right now, I know other counties have asked that too. Um, it says here, under this program, recipients have broad discretion on the uses of funds similar to the ways in which they may have used funds generated from their own revenue sources. Uh, recipients should review the L A T C F eligibility and allocation methodology for county governments, um. This came from the US Treasury. And the whistle counties, I mean, there's guidance here, I haven't had a chance to go through it all, I mean, this was new to me two days ago and we were up for ears in this, but rest assured, we will, um, I can share this with, I can make copies. Um, I haven't gone through it very, very much to this point, so. Something new, um, sounds straightforward, so we will sure apply. The only other thing, uh, there's something with the, um, uh, state and local, uh, cybersecurity grant program and this one, I'm not gonna spend any time on yet because the governor hasn't approved it, but they sent it out anyway, uh, if we get wind that the governor approves this, then we'll be jumping in with both hands and both feet. So, I believe that's, yep, for cybersecurity, so it's on the radar, um, I'm not just gonna forget about it, but I won't spend a lot of time on something that's not even approved yet, so.
Okay, thank you Lee, thank you Lee.
And the weeds, just real quick.
Yeah, uh, the weeds, I've got all that information here and we can look at, uh, they've got the district meetings in here. I'm not sure when the conference is, but, yeah, I've gone through and I've created calendar reminders for all the deadlines for the weed in the week, so.
The only other thing I don't see you have is the mosquito, are you guys not done with that mosquito grant?
Yes, and we talked about that the other day.
And I think that, that weeds one was actually like November fourth, so we would just, it needs two people to go to that. So Lee and would you probably go to that then or?
Yeah, I think that was the district meeting and I have RSVP by.
With two people.
Four, so.
And Jared is gonna be even here, so we'll select another one for the usual.
All right.
All right.
Okay, now we, uh, have comments or input from the sheriff.
Good, um, I guess, uh, I probably need to meet an executive session with you, but I've, um.
All right.
Entertaining, entertaining some, uh, contract talks with, uh, Blue County Sheriff. And, uh, also, um, a couple, uh, retired highway patrol officers and, uh, uh, sheriff's department officers.
Well, should we go into executive session?
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
All right, I have a second. All right.
All right. If you guys have got that late this time.
Okay.